Good morning. Today's public hearing is about to begin. This hearing is being conducted remotely via Zoom and the live stream will be available on the TLC's website. All persons wishing to testify were asked to sign up in advance of the hearing. All registered speakers are joining the meeting via Zoom. If you are speaking today, your audio and video will automatically muted. A few special notes for our registered speakers. Please ensure that your display name in the Zoom meeting matches the name that you used when you signed up to speak. This will enable the moderator to confirm you are present in the meeting. If you are listed as iPhone or some other name that differs from your name that you use when you signed up, we will not know that you are present in the meeting. You must update your screen name to the name you provided when you signed up. When your turn to speakers approaching, the host will send a prompt inviting you to join the meeting as a panelist. In order to provide testimony on camera, you must accept the invite. Please be aware that if you are watching this meeting on a minimized screen, you may not see this prompt. If you have accepted the invite to rejoin as a panelist, when your name is called, you will have control of both your camera and microphone. When ready, please state your name and affiliation and then proceed with your testimony. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes per speaker. When your testimony is complete, your audio and video will be muted by the moderator. Closed captioning is available for today's meeting. Thank you for your attention. I will now yield the floor to our Commissioner and Chair David Doe.
Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's public hearing on two TLC rule proposals. One is to amend the driver rules to achieve our Vision Zero goals and number two, rules to implement the COVID-19 Recovery Act. State law allowing holders of FHV vehicle licenses that were affiliated with livery bases. If you're not speaking, please put yourself on mute. That expired during the New York pandemic emergency period to reapply so long as licenses remain affiliated with a non-high-volume four-hire vehicle livery base. I am Commissioner David Doe and I'm joined today by Commissioners Kaufman, Mitchell, Chan, Bierstein, Velazquez. Commissioner Sorrentino will join us shortly. And let me just make sure there's any other Commissioners. Okay, great. Thank you Commissioners for joining us this morning. Before we begin, I'd like to speak a little bit about TLC and Vision Zero. As the regulator of hundreds of thousands of vehicles and drivers in our city, TLC is a foundational Vision Zero agency and a member of the Vision Zero Task Force. Our commitment to Vision Zero and its goals of eliminating all deaths and serious injuries due to crashes. Our belief that serious crashes are preventable is also total. We will try not to call them accidents at TLC because someone is always at fault. As Chair, I regularly review incident reports about crashes involving TLC drivers too often, frankly. I want to stress that in a majority of cases, the TLC driver is not at fault. We have the best drivers in the country and typically it's the TLC driver who is obeying the rules safely and professionally, doing their job when non-TLC drivers behave poorly. It is particularly distressing when a TLC driver is killed on the job through no fault of their own, while simply trying to provide for their family. The Vision Zero rule proposal we'll be discussing today is not intended to target our safe drivers. It will be mostly impactful for a small minority of drivers, less than 3% of active drivers, who persistently violate our Vision Zero rules, which are designed to deter unsafe driving behavior. We know that drivers who repeatedly commit violations are more likely to become involved in a serious crash or fatality. TLC drivers spend more time on the road than any other group and that increases the odds of persistent violators causing harm even more, including harm to other TLC drivers. Vision Zero violations have been steadily and rapidly rising with 31% increase between 2023 and 2024. Our rules as they currently stand are not changing behavior of persistent violators. They're becoming just another cost of doing business. So to make our streets more safe and continue moving towards the Vision Zero goals, we are proposing to increase not only the penalties but also knowledge and education. We have a great Vision Zero instruction in our schools and drivers who violate Vision Zero rules would get more, including a wave refresher. To tell us more about this, I would like to introduce Kathy for our managing attorney from the Prosecution Unit and Rebecca, a special project manager for our Education Unit. Both have worked hard on fulfilling our Vision Zero goal and Rebecca is on our city's Vision Zero Task Force. I'll now hand it over to Kathy and Rebecca to walk through a presentation for our Commissioners and the public. Kathy and Rebecca?
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Harshberger. I work in education at TLC's Licensing Division and serve as the Vision Zero Task Force representative from TLC. I'm here today with my colleague Kathy Heppie, the managing attorney from our Prosecution Division, to present on the new Vision Zero and Accessibility course that the TLC has created. We have worked on the curriculum in collaboration with different divisions within TLC and other city agencies on the Vision Zero Task Force and we're proud to be with many of them here today. So I will begin this presentation by providing the context for the history of the work the TLC does to prevent traffic crashes. Kathy will give an overview of the current TLC rules, the number and types of violations drivers have, and then she'll detail our rule proposal. She will share the goals of the proposal and their importance and safety impact. I will then go over the purpose of the new Vision Zero and Accessibility course and go over the curriculum the drivers will take. We'll then answer questions from the Commission. So TLC has served on the Vision Zero Task Force with our sister agencies since it launched more than 10 years ago in 2014. This lifesaving initiative has focused on ending traffic deaths and preventing crashes through education, street redesign, and enforcement throughout New York City. As part of that initiative, TLC has trained tens of thousands of TLC licensed drivers on best driving practices, how to avoid dangerous driving behavior, and the goals of Vision Zero. And New York City is very unique because when you get into a taxi, an Uber, a Lyft or livery car, every driver has completed an in-person education course. And during those courses, drivers learn about safe driving practices, the rules of the road, and sharing the road safely. Drivers also have to pass an exam that tests them on traffic safety in order to have a TLC driver license. And then every three years when they renew their license, all drivers must take a renewal course that covers Vision Zero, Accessibility, and Best Driving Practices. There are more than 180,000 professional drivers regulated by the TLC. Professional drivers have a major impact on traffic safety because they do millions of trips every year serving the public. And these efforts make a big difference. In 2015, the first full year of Vision Zero, there were 26 traffic fatalities that involved a taxi or four-hire vehicle. Last year, this decreased to 11 traffic fatalities. That's almost a 60% decrease. TLC has made significant progress in driver education and improving safety, but we must keep pushing further to realize the city's goal of Vision Zero. As we look at TLC's work ahead in the next 10 years, we must expand our education efforts to prevent future traffic crashes and protect public safety. And now my colleague Kathy is going to present.
This image on this slide shows a four-hire vehicle parked both on the sidewalk and in a bike lane. These are the kinds of violations that we're talking about here. And these violations include stopping in crosswalks, blocking bike lanes, double parking, parking at fire hydrants, failing to stop at stop lines, and double parking. In TLC Rules Chapter 18A1 and 18A2, for these types of violations, which are issued for what are classified as stationary and moving violations. The current penalties for these violations are solely monetary and do not escalate with repeated violations. While drivers can pick up and drop off passengers in bus lanes, bus stops, and in front of fire hydrants as long as they move the car if there is an emergency, these are not considered violations. Vision Zero complaints have been on the rise. They increased 37% from 15,332 complaints in 2023 to 21,025 complaints in 2024. During the 15-month period that the TLC analyzed, the TLC issued over 28,000 traffic violations for these two rules in Chapter 80. For some drivers, traffic violations are just the cost of doing business in New York City. 4,746 licensees were guilty of two or more of 18A1 and A2 violations in 2023 and in 2024. These traffic violations are dangerous to everyone in our streets. To improve public safety, TLC is proposing that all drivers who are guilty of these violations complete a Vision Zero and Accessibility course at a TLC authorized education organization. And on the first violation, we're not proposing a change to the existing monetary fines, but rather the drivers would receive a point on their TLC license. In addition to taking this course, on the second violation where drivers are found guilty or plead guilty, the existing monetary fines would stay the same and the driver would receive two points on their TLC license. On the third violation for stationary violations, that's 18A1, the monetary penalty would increase from $100 before hearing to $200 after a hearing. And from $200 to $300 if found guilty after a hearing. Drivers would receive two points on their TLC license for the third violation. On the third violation for moving violations, that's 18A2, the monetary penalty would increase from $200 before hearing to $300 before hearing and $300 guilty after a hearing to $400 after a hearing. So $100 in each case, it would go up for the third violation. Drivers would also receive two points on their TLC license for that third violation. This is all in addition to the course. These next images show more examples of unsafe violations that were reported to the TLC. The image on the left shows a four-hire vehicle parked on a sidewalk and obstructing a pedestrian rim. The image on the right shows a taxi obstructing a painted pedestrian island in the middle of a crosswalk. And you can see here, you know, the pedestrians are blocked. In this next slide, this is an image of a taxi blocking both a bike lane and a crosswalk that was reported to the TLC. These proposed increased penalties will deter unsafe behavior in several ways. The increased monetary fine for third violations will discourage drivers from repeated unsafe behavior. Licensees will have to pay for this course, which will be offered by nine TLC education organizations at a cost range between $75 and $125. Getting six or more points will lead to persistent violator summonses, which may result in the suspension of their TLC license, depending on how many points the licensees receive within a 15-month period. The licensee may also need to take a defensive driving course to avoid suspension or revocation or to even be eligible for a settlement.
So the new course will educate drivers and reinforce safe driving practices. It covers both Vision Zero and Accessibility, two topics that are central to TLC's core mission of safe, accessible taxi and four-hire vehicle service in New York City. The course will also retrain drivers who have received complaints regarding serving passengers with disabilities. For instance, safely securing passengers who will use wheelchairs before the ride begins. These accessibility complaints often have a safety component as well since it's very dangerous for a passenger to be unsecured in the car. TLC has created one comprehensive education course that covers both traffic safety and accessibility for drivers to complete, and we trained all TLC authorized schools to teach the course. Remedial courses deter dangerous driving behavior. Of the 1,201 drivers who have taken our remedial course at a TLC authorized school for using an electronic device while driving, less than 2% have had to take that class again since 2019. The course discourages drivers from treating distracted driving like the cost of doing business. The curriculum for the new Vision Zero and Accessibility course spans six topics with the goal of drivers learning this information and driving safely after the course so that they will not receive any violations going forward. We teach in the curriculum that drivers can pick up and drop off in bus lanes, but not wait or park there. We really want them to know that they can pick up or drop off passengers in front of fire hydrants, but they have to be ready to move the vehicle in case of an emergency. Drivers learn the ins and outs of parking regulations, which are so important, such as learning that they can legally pick up and drop off and no standing, no parking, but not no stopping. And we really want drivers to begin using this info as soon as they finish the course. Other topics that are covered are like the ins and outs of New York City's street design, sharing the road safely with buses, bicyclists, and pedestrians. And we also go over other bus driving practices, such as making safe left turns, driving carefully at dusk, and picking up safely at the airports. For instance, avoiding parking on the shoulders approaching JFK and LaGuardia Airport. And since another important topic in the course is accessibility, it goes over how to safely secure passengers who use wheelchairs, driver responsibilities under the American Disabilities Act, and safely picking and dropping off since Vision Zero and Accessibility go together. And after taking the course, TLC wants drivers to feel empowered and confident that they know how to legally and safely pick up and drop off passengers during trips, as well as provide a safe ride. With that, we really look forward to hearing from the public and I'm happy to address any questions from the Commission.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Okay, I have a question. Over the last couple of weeks, I've received a lot of comments around people with disabilities and pickup and drop offs. Do these rules change any pickup and drop off rules for people with disabilities at, let's say, a bus lane or a bus stop?
Nope, they don't change them at all. And these rules are just designed to protect passengers with disabilities so that drivers know what their existing rules are and are prepared to follow them.
I want to take that a little bit further and maybe Kathy can jump in. Is, so currently, drivers can pick up and drop off in a bus stop, bus lane, and it is not illegal. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any other questions? And I'll ask Kathy and Rebecca to stand by just in case we have follow-ups later as we hear more public comments. Okay. Seeing none, let's go to our public for their testimony. As a reminder to all of our attendees, if you have joined as iPhone, and I see a few of you still iPhone, iPhone 372, iPhone 6, we will not know if you have signed up and therefore you will not be able to testify. Others who have nicknames or other names that you did not use to sign up, please rename yourself so that we know that you have signed up to speak and we can put you as a panelist when your time comes up. I will now hand it over to our General Counsel Cheryl Aludo to take us through the public hearing. Cheryl?
Good morning. When I call your name, you can unmute your microphone and begin your testimony. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to speak. The time limit will be strictly enforced. A 30-second warning will be provided and then you will need to conclude your testimony when your time is up. Today's two rule proposals were published in the City Record and posted on our website on February 7, 2025. The public comment period ends today. The video of this hearing and copies of all written comments received through today will be provided to the Commissioners prior to the vote on these rules. With that, we will begin our public hearing and I will call on our first speaker. We have Keith Kerman from DCAST.
Good morning Commissioners. Good to be with you. My name is Keith Kerman. I'm a Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, DCAST, and New York City's Chief Fleet Officer. New York City operates the largest municipal fleet in the country with nearly 29,000 vehicles and 8,000 staff who are authorized to operate our vehicles either full-time or as needed. I'm here to express support to the Taxi and Limousine Commission's proposal to strengthen enforcement of traffic violations that impact public safety, including blocking access to fire hydrants, bike lanes, crosswalks, intersections, and double parking. These are not victimless violations. Blocking fire hydrants places public safety at direct risk as the Fire Commissioner publicly highlighted involving a fire emergency on February 12 in the Bronx. Every time a pedestrian, a child, a senior citizen, or a bicyclist must move out of the protection of a bike lane or crosswalk because a car is improperly there, the safety of that pedestrian, that child, that senior citizen, that bicyclist is put at risk by the driver. Every time a driver double parks, traffic is slowed for countless other drivers who must also then change lanes, adding the risk of a collision. As a manager of a large fleet, the largest in the city, we work daily to address these same concerns. The city fleet has placed live tracking on all vehicles to help monitor and respond to violations, increase enforcement of traffic violations, which each fleet driver must pay personally. And as we announced in a public report in October 2024, DCAST has also begun an initiative to place intelligent speed assistance, speed control, on vehicles that have a history of traffic violations. DCAST is adding more vehicles into that initiative now. Like TLC, DCAST employs safe driver training. DCAST has increased safe driver training for all drivers and for those involved in multiple violations or crashes. In the last fiscal year, 11,552 fleet operators completed this training, which is an all-day course. This was a huge increase from our previous year. Over 130,000 fleet operators now completed the course. In following Mayor Adams' Executive Order 39 of 2024, DCAST is now expanding the safety training to drivers for city contractors and school bus operators. This training reminds operators of the rules of the road, discusses best practices for staying safe, and most importantly, we candidly discuss real incidents and the consequences, often tragic, to innocent New Yorkers and at times the drivers themselves, when drivers fail to follow the rules and fail to-
30 seconds remaining.
It's up to all of us to stay focused on traffic safety, which is public safety, and increasing the consequences and training tied to violations is a good step. We encourage you on this path and thank you for listening to us today. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much Deputy Commissioner Kerman for your testimony. I have a quick question on telemetrics and also I know that across the entire fleet, the New York City fleet, there are not dash cams. But what are your thoughts on and the data and what it shows on telemetrics and dash cams for your fleet?
Sure. So on telematics, we're tracking live 29,000 vehicles. You're getting the location, you're getting the speed, you're getting whether it is speeding. So we are overlaying the maps of the speed limits wherever you are. You're getting seatbelt use, including for the driver and the passenger. You're getting hard braking, hard accelerating, hard cornering. So you know, speed and seatbelts are a matter of law, but hard braking, hard cornering, hard accelerating are pretty good. They're not matters of law. There could be a time when you slam the brakes because somebody jumped in front of your car and you're doing a good thing. But generally, if you're driving and you're constantly slamming the brakes, constantly flooring the accelerator, you're an unsafe driver. And you're also getting crash alerts. When a vehicle's in a crash, we get an immediate alert and actually a PDF, a report, instantaneously so we can begin that investigation. We're doing initiative to start looking at the role of outward-facing car cameras, including with your agency, with TLC. And so we think that could also be very important additional data. We have about 400 vehicles now as part of that program. And so that's something we're looking for for the future.
Thank you so much Deputy Commissioner. I want to recognize Commissioner Kaufman for a question.
Thank you and thank you Deputy Commissioner. I just have a couple of questions. This is very interesting. First, I'm wondering if the fines or penalties for violation are comparable to the ones shown here at this meeting?
Well, we're paying the direct fines and violations that are assessed to the general public for our employees. So you're getting whatever the public violation is, whether it's a red light violation, a speeding violation, a bus lane violation, the city employee is paying that exact fine personally.
Okay, great, great. And then are the reports of violations that you're receiving, what proportion is coming from the new telemetrics versus NYPD ticketing?
Well, red light, you know, so there are two different aspects of the program. We're getting the red light cameras, the speed cameras, the automated camera alerts, just like everybody else who operates a fleet or a personal car would get. We of course will have, we are, same employees are required to inform us if they have a direct police intervention where they're getting. Then in addition, we are doing alerts all day long. We have what we call the Fleet Office of Real-Time Tracking, essentially a command center for the city fleet. You're getting pinged, including the Taxi and Limousine Commission for your city vehicles. You're getting pinged whenever there's excessive speeding, whenever there's a person without a seatbelt, whenever there is a crash. That's instantaneous and happening all day long. So if a Taxi and Limousine Commission city-owned vehicle is going 80 on First Avenue, you're getting an alert and our office is getting an alert as the 80 is happening.
And are you able to respond in real time?
Yeah, absolutely, especially on things like excessive speeding. We have dropped excessive speeding across the whole city fleet over 75% because you can really get to that very, very quickly. So yeah, we've seen a lot of progress on safety. We have a risk monitoring, so every vehicle gets a risk score and that's tied across six things: excessive speeding, speeding, seatbelts, and then the ABCs, cornering, accelerating, and braking. And we've made a goal to be at Vision Zero, no high or moderate risk. We've knocked it down about 45%. We've made a lot of progress with more progress to go.
Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Commissioner. I'll turn it back to Cheryl.
Thank you. Our next speaker is NYPD Chief Thomas Alps.
Good morning Cheryl, Commissioners. My name is Deputy Chief Thomas Alps, Chief of Transportation with the New York City Police Department. I'm here to testify in support of changing TLC's rules to improve public safety, prevent traffic crashes, and improve traffic movement in New York City. The Police Department has served alongside city agencies like the TLC and the Department of Transportation on the Vision Zero Task Force since its inception in 2014 to end traffic deaths in New York City and prevent future crashes. Two of the most common traffic violations received by TLC licensed drivers include certain categories of unsafe moving and stationary violations. These unsafe violations include blocking bike lanes, failing to stop at stop lines, stopping in crosswalks and intersections, and double parking. While drivers pay a penalty and then continue to engage in this behavior, the public is put at risk and our city streets become more difficult to navigate. Increasing the penalty to a two-and-a-half-hour educational course and license points may deter drivers from receiving the same violations over and over. The Vision Zero and Accessibility course curriculum has lifesaving information such as sharing the road safely, making safe left turns, being extra cautious during dusk, especially during daylight savings time, and never driving while impaired from drugs like cannabis or alcohol. The course also prepares drivers with the information they need to go out on the road and successfully work, including how to legally and safely pick up and drop off passengers on streets with bike lanes and bus lanes, obey fire hydrant rules, and navigate streets with different types of parking regulations. As professional drivers, TLC licensed drivers are on the road more than anyone. We support this rule change in education course because it will improve public safety and the flow of traffic on our shared streets and ask that you vote to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you Chief. Are there any questions from the Commission? All right, no questions. Thank you so much Chief. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is from FDNY, Shama Turakala.
Hello, good morning. I am grateful to have the opportunity to speak with you today about the pressing matter of preventing parking in front of fire hydrants. The FDNY supports the proposed TLC rule changes as they would increase penalties for parking in front of a fire hydrant. Access to fire hydrants can help save precious seconds that are key to keeping New Yorkers safe and stopping the spread of a fire during an emergency. On February 12, there was a fire in the Bronx that resulted in the death of two people. Another fire on February 9 resulted in the death of another person. These fires had one thing in common: a vehicle was blocking access to a fire hydrant. In an emergency, every second counts. The time firefighters lose trying to get access to hydrants is time that directly obstructs their ability to save lives. This is not a matter of mere conscience. It is a matter of life and death. Currently, if a driver licensed by TLC pleads guilty to parking and blocking a fire hydrant, he or she would receive a penalty of $100. If found guilty during a hearing, the penalty increases to $200. These violations are clearly not enough. As we have seen time and time again, some drivers consider the cost of these tickets as a necessary price to pay for driving in New York City. The proposed rules would increase the penalty to adding one point on a driver's TLC license for their first violation or two points for their second or third violation. According to New York State law, if they accrue more than 11 points in 18 months, the driver's license may be suspended. Additionally, the new rules require drivers to take a course at a TLC licensed provider within 60 days of receiving the violation to avoid suspension. This three-hour-long curriculum would make sure that drivers learn essential traffic rules and laws, including the proper distance to park from a fire hydrant. These measures would be important to ensuring that TLC licensed drivers are not only aware of the fact that they should not park in front of a fire- are not only aware of the fact that they should not park in front of fire hydrants, but also learn that the real danger associated with doing so. Parking in front of a fire hydrant can have serious and, as these past few weeks have demonstrated, fatal consequences. These new rules will increase the incentive to park at a safe distance from a fire hydrant, helping the FDNY accomplish its mission to protect New Yorkers and their property. We urge you to approve the new rules. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate your support of the FDNY.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shama. Any questions for the FDNY? All right, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Our next speaker is AJ Gojia, a licensee.
I think DOT is also-
Going in the way we have our list lined up here.
We'll get to DOT, Rebecca. Thank you.
AJ, go ahead.
Yes, hi. Good morning. I'm a licensed TLC driver. I've been driving since nineteen ninety, so I've been a longtime TLC driver. And I'm calling in to support the new rule. And there are multiple reasons for this. First of them, I'm a pretty avid bicycle rider in the city with my ten-year-old son. And not a day has passed by that I've, when I drive a bicycle in the city with my son, that I almost get killed or hurt by some TLC driver where the passenger has opened the door into the bike lane. So I think the onus is on us as TLC drivers to keep everybody in the city safe. I'm a TLC driver myself, and when I drive, I make sure I'm not parking the bike lane. There's plenty of space to drop and pick up a passenger without being in a bike lane. So I don't see a reason why a few bad apples are giving everybody a bad name. And I think with this new rule, it will hopefully discourage a lot of people from doing this bad behavior. Also, my grandmother uses a wheelchair, and nine out of ten times, she has no access to the cut in the sidewalk to the street because either a taxi driver is picking up a passenger, blocking that area, or dropping a passenger. So I strongly support this new rule. We, as drivers, our responsibility is to keep everybody safe, and that's what I would like to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is from DOT, Kim Wiley Schwartz.
Hi, good morning, Chairperson and Commissioners. My name is Kim Wiley Schwartz, and I'm the Assistant Commissioner for Education and Outreach at the New York City Department of Transportation. And I appreciate the opportunity to testify today on behalf of Commissioner Rodriguez in support of the Taxi and Limousine Commission's proposed rule amendments to strengthen Vision Zero enforcement with increased fines, remedial driver education, and the expansion of considered convictions in fitness revocation hearings. I believe that together, these proposed amendments will assist in addressing the most dangerous driving behaviors we're seeing here in New York City. So, of course, safety is a top priority for the New York City Department of Transportation, which is why we fully submit TLC's proposed amendments to increase penalties for stationary and moving violations. These rules reinforce the city's commitment to Vision Zero by addressing unsafe behaviors that threaten the safety of pedestrians, cyclists, and all road users. Enhancing penalties for infractions such as blocking crosswalks, double parking, obstructing bike lanes will encourage professional drivers to operate with heightened awareness and responsibility, setting the tone for all who drive on the streets of New York City. Ensuring that these violations carry meaningful consequences is essential to maintaining safe and efficient streets for all New Yorkers. This is also why we support TLC's proposed rules to require the completion of a remedial driver education course with Vision Zero curriculum for all drivers convicted of a violation. We believe that adding this measure will serve as a deterrent to repeat offenders and will promote the safety of all road users. Over the last eleven years, agencies who work as part of the Vision Zero Task Force have used education that goes beyond public service announcements and general reminders to train their fore-hire and fleet drivers with actionable skills that navigate the urban environment. The results have been successful, as you heard earlier, with a sixty percent decrease in annual fatality numbers when comparing two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-four. We believe that utilizing this approach for professional drivers will also be successful. New York City works closely with TLC to develop their unique curriculum and driver behavior change approaches, and has since two thousand and fifteen, when New York City Department of Transportation and TLC jointly created and produced Drive Like Your Family Lives Here, a video featuring members of Families for Safe Streets telling their stories. The proposed course would build on this past partnership. New York City also strongly supports TLC's proposal to consider certain out-of-state convictions when determining driver fitness. The safety of New York City streets depends on holding professional drivers to the highest standards, regardless of where prior violations occurred, expanding the review process to include-
Thirty seconds remaining.
Infractions includes a driver's full safety record. And this measure will help identify and address potential risks, ensuring that only qualified, responsible-for-hire-vehicle drivers remain licensed. In short, we commend the Taxi and Limousine Commission for advancing these critical safety measures, strengthening enforcement of Vision Zero principles, and creating meaningful driver education experiences will only assure that we will continue our efforts in Vision Zero. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Assistant Commissioner Wiley Schwartz. A quick question that I have, while going through comments and a lot of feedback on these roles from drivers, oftentimes they say that there's not enough taxi relief stands or areas where they can go and take a quick break. How can the TLC work with the DOT to get more taxi relief stands for our drivers so that they don't have to park or block illegally different areas?
Well, as you know, the curb is our most difficult piece of property on any New York City street. And I think the process, as we create more spaces, daylit spaces, spaces for offloading, spaces for, you know, anyone who needs to use the curb differently, will require, you know, all of us in New York to make some compromises as we rethink the way that we use all parking spaces. But I do think that this New York City Department of Transportation is up to that task. And we have already started working closely with members of your staff to also look at places, streets, where we've created unintended consequences for your drivers by not making enough loading and unloading zones. I think extending this to waiting and respite zones will need to be something that we explore together.
Great. Looking forward to working with you. Commissioners, are there any questions for DOT? Okay. Thank you so much, Assistant Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Beata V. Desai from Naitua.
Good morning, Commissioner Doe and members of the Commission. My name is Beata V. Desai, and I'm the Executive Director of the New York Taxi Workers Alliance. I think your discussion this morning is lacking a lot of context. It should really be understood that TLC drivers are held to the strictest of standards of any motorist across the state of New York. I mean, I would dare say probably even across this country. And as Commissioner said earlier, time after time, reports show that TLC drivers per mile driven are among the safest motorists across the state of New York and certainly, you know, the city of New York. They work long hours. This is a difficult job. You're at the whim of the person behind you. You're reaching a destination that they control. And for the largest workforce in this industry, you're also answering to, you know, to companies that will deactivate you, which means take your job away at an instant. The TLC, for years, has separated stationary violations from non-hazardous violations from hazardous moving violations. And I don't understand, you don't seem to have any real data as to why you are making this change all of a sudden. And there seems to be no connection between, you know, parking violations and requiring a driver to take a course. When they take this course, which doesn't even seem to be related to the violation in question, they're not only gonna have to pay for that class, but they also are, you know, they're not able to work that day, and they still have to pay their expenses out of pocket. This is, I mean, the punishment here is not as simple as just a class. These expenses add up for professional drivers, and all of this seems incredibly excessive, you know. You know, DCAST's presentation was interesting. I'm pretty sure those drivers are workers, are who are employed and have benefits and all sorts of, you know, perks on the job. Drivers, TLC drivers meanwhile, don't have that, and they themselves-
Thirty seconds remaining.
-have been responsible for their safe driving. And without any of those perks, drivers have lived up to these standards. They should not be punished randomly at this point and excessively. There is no doubt that there needs to be more space to park and drop off. There needs to be education of the companies that dispatch to the location, like Uber and Lyft or even Bases. And for a street-hailing passenger, there needs to be education that the driver has a right to decide where they can safely discharge you at the end of a trip. Drivers should not be punished.
Thank you, Beata V. Look forward to hearing comments as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Zubin Soleimani from Naitua.
Hi, good morning. Just a couple of housekeeping things first. I noticed you've been mentioning the users who, who their name is iPhone. So if I just pause my time for a minute, because I think this is an issue for everybody. When I was in the waiting room, I was not able to change my name. So if you're saying, hey, we're not gonna let you in, we won't select you until you show a name, you can't change the name in the position in Zoom that you're in. Now, when you promoted me to a panelist, I could. But those people are gonna be locked out of the hearing the way that you set up the Zoom. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Zubin. I'll have my team reach out to those particular folks and make sure that we work with them. And then I think we can change the name on our end once we chat with them directly.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I'm gonna identify myself. My name is Zubin Soleimani. I'm a staff attorney, and I'm with the New York Taxi Workers Alliance. I want to note that you guys requested that we identify ourselves, and I believe the gentleman before who spoke did not identify himself. He is a well-known educator with a TLC education business. I think that's relevant to the, to anybody who has a financial interest here. I think this course is gonna generate a lot of revenue. If we assume the cost of a hundred and fifty dollars a class, the same as the renewal course, that's four point two million dollars a year. So I'd hope that everybody who testifies today will identify themselves and any interest they have in these rules. Guys, I gotta tell you, what you're doing here is shockingly disproportionate, the kind of violations we're talking about. I do not understand what you're doing, and I do not understand if the Commissioners here know what an eighty thirteen A one violation is. You guys keep putting pictures of crosswalk violations up, and I understand that as a safety-related violation. The crosswalk violation is one of the only, if not the only violation, that under the RCNY gets points. The rest of them don't. The rest of them are not safety-related. And I don't know if you guys realize what you're gonna do here. Every single parking ticket, somebody has to pay a fine, like they already do, accrue points, and go to a class. The class, the current, like I said, is a hundred and fifty dollars for the renewal course. If you're talking a hundred and fifty dollars plus two hundred dollars plus a day lost of work, your stats show three hundred and eighty-four dollars a day in Fairbox plus expenses. You're turning, the gentleman from DCAST said, oh, they just pay the regular fine. The regular fine for a no standing is sixty-five dollars. You're turning a sixty-five-dollar ticket into eight hundred dollars of economic loss for a workforce that has half the median hourly wage of the, of the regular work in New York City. That is insane. It is cruel and completely disproportionate. You know, I go onto the city law database right now. I go onto the city law database right now and look at the most, I would appreciate comments not being made while I'm speaking. You go on the city law database, I'm not cherry-picking these. The two most recent decisions showing an eighty thirteen A one violation is a driver parking in a hotel loading zone. Okay, with the permission of a dormant because he has to use the bathroom. That person has to lose a day of work and an eight hundred dollar economic loss because they went to the bathroom? That person parking in a hotel loading zone is causing a fatal crash? This is, I'm sorry, but your, your presentation was misleading.
Thirty seconds remaining.
There's thousands of violations these years. You are not breaking down which ones are the crosswalk violations and which are the hotel loading zone and all of the other category. Every single RCNY parking violation is an eighty thirteen A one violation. What you presented today is disingenuous, it's misleading, and frankly, it's gonna, you know, in the context of the economic loss in which you guys are trying to fix the TLC rules, which haven't been working, and which taxi drivers are still coming out of the pandemic and dealing with medallion that, you know, two-
Time has expired.
Please reconsider. Do not pass these rules.
Thanks, Zubin.
Our next speaker is Andrew Greenblatt from IDG. Mr. Greenblatt, can you unmute your mic and begin?
I'm sorry, I was, at the last second, you put me back to attendee, and now I'm back as past. So here I am. You wanna put me up? Let me know, let me know when you're ready.
We're ready.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioner Doe and the Taxi and Limousine Commission. My name is Andrew Greenblatt, and I'm the Policy Director for the Independent Drivers Guild, otherwise known as IDG. Thank you for this opportunity to testify regarding the proposed increased penalties for drivers in bike and bus lanes. And by the way, I want to point out, there's a difference between bus lanes, where it is legal to be picked up, and bike lanes, where I believe it isn't, right? And so the proposed rule change is unlikely to alter driver behavior beyond stranding passengers, particularly those with disabilities. We urge the TLC to reconsider its approach of penalizing drivers for situations that are beyond their control and instead adopt proven methods used in other cities to address these issues. The TLC has noted that in, in a recent fifteen-month period, twenty-eight thousand tickets were issued for drivers for these kinds of violations. This raises the question, why do drivers continue to pull over in bus and bike lanes when they already face expensive tickets? Drivers talk about one reason, the TLC another. Neither warrants this change. Drivers point out that they are sent onto trips with illegal pickup and drop-off sites. Making this change will only make it so the drivers rush through those pickups, stranding people who have increased needs, such as people in wheelchairs or with other disabilities. A more effective approach is what they do in New Orleans, where they get the app companies to not dispatch to places where it's illegal to pick up and instead to have the passengers meet the driver at someplace where it is legal. The second problem that the TLC is talking about is people who pull over, get out of their cars, ask a driver why they're doing that, they'll tell you it's because they need food and to use the bathroom. Raising the penalties for these events won't reduce the need to eat or use a bathroom. Imagine if the TLC suddenly said to employees that they couldn't use bathrooms or get food below Ninety-sixth Street. This would cause chaos in the TLC. The solution to that problem wouldn't be to raise penalties on those, on those employees when they needed to use the bathroom or get food. It would be to make food and bathrooms accessible to those employees. That is true here as well. The TLC should stop spending countless hours punishing drivers and instead use some of those hours to find places where drivers can pull over legally and safely to take care of basic bodily functions.
Thirty seconds remaining.
And punish drivers enough that they are no longer human. You should stop trying. Let's stop punishing drivers for actions they can't control and start making it possible for them to do their jobs. Bank robbers rob because they need money, because they want money. You can punish them to stop doing that. You can't punish people to stop needing to go to the bathroom. You're barking up the wrong tree.
Thank you. Our next-
I have a quick question. Do you think leaving a vehicle in a bike lane is dangerous or not?
Yes, yes, I think we need to, I need, I think we need to identify. Commissioner, can't ask me a question, then not let me answer.
Here's my, my, my question, and I'll give you your, your, your time. And that, so that is dangerous, right? And so, you know, they're not picking up, dropping, they're just leaving their vehicle and parked there for, for, sometimes I have observed this for a long period of time. And so how can we mitigate that if it's not these rules? And I'll give you your time. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, so what these rules are doing is they're saying, look, we have a problem with bank robberies. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna punish tellers when they have a gun to their face who hand over the money, right? You're pun, you're not punishing the person who's making the decisions here, right? So there's two groups of people whose behavior you need to change. Neither one is the- So there's two groups of people whose behavior you need to change. Neither one is the driver. The first is the companies that send people to pick people up and drop people off in bike lanes and bus lanes, et cetera. The second is the Department of Transportation that does not give enough places where people can pull over. Nobody would risk $100 ticket if there was a convenient place to park within a few blocks where they could go to the bathroom and get food to eat. You're, if you want to punish anyone, put fines on the TLC, on the Department of Transportation for not providing the appropriate places for people to park. They're the ones causing this trouble. Instead, you're punishing the person who has no choice in the matter and making it hard and make it more expensive for them to do the things they can't choose not to do doesn't change their behavior. It's just smacking them without actually solving the problem. We all want safe streets. We all live in this city. We're all pedestrians. We're all bike riders. Make it so we can do our jobs safely, not so we get punished because someone else won't let us.
Thank you, Andrew.
All right, our next speaker is Jean Ryan from Disabled in Action. Ms. Ryan, can you unmute your mic?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm Jean Ryan, President of Disabled in Action of Metropolitan New York. We submitted long testimony with other disability rights groups. The needs and rights of people with disabilities are not being considered in this proposed rule to increase fines and points. We ride buses and we don't want them to be slow. But how are we supposed to get into and out of taxis, access ride and four higher vehicles if we cannot get close to the curb? Of all people, we would think the TLC understands that. Blind people cannot be picked up or let out on the next block or around the corner and know where they are. People who walk with great difficulty also cannot be dropped off further away from where they are going and may have to be helped to the door of where they are going to. So the driver would have to temporarily leave the vehicle. And wheelchair users and walker users cannot get into or out of their MTA vehicles or four higher vehicles without being able to get up onto the sidewalk or down from the sidewalk. For us, being near the corner is best, or we have to go in the street with traffic. Six years ago and more, we fought for the ability to be dropped off and picked up in bus lanes and bus stops and DOT gave it to us. But now we find out that it seems to only apply to the big AAR vans, even though now most AAR riders are in broker four higher vehicles. There should not be any penalties for access ride or for higher vehicles picking up or dropping off people with disabilities in bus stops or by double parking or in intersections. There are whole blocks with a bike lane on one side and a bus lane on the other. Where are we supposed to be let off or gotten onto? By having heavy penalties for picking us up in these places, drivers will refuse to pick us up or drop us off like they're already doing at 375 Pearl Street. By my block on a narrow, quiet street, the only safe place to pick me up or drop me off is a seldom-used bus stop or the intersection. Drivers are getting tickets for picking us up or dropping us off. Now they are. Even though it's valid, times change, but we still need access. We're not going to be stuck in our homes. Thank you. Thank you.
And like my team said, right, picking up and dropping off at a bus lane is not, is not illegal. So it's legal, right?
But they're getting tickets and then that makes the drivers not want to pick us up.
And there is due process for that. And oftentimes, and I'll have Kathy speak on it, oftentimes when we do see these pickup and drop-offs, we drop those cases always, always with the evidence. My question though is, and I think I've asked you this previously, right, is when, my biggest frustration is when private vehicles, other types of vehicles, park on the curb at a bus lane and eliminates the ability for others to drop off people with disabilities, passengers or even buses on the curb. And that is something that we want to address with this. What are your thoughts on that portion of the rule?
You mean personal vehicles? Are you talking about?
Vehicles parked and they, and leave it there. And also, in some cases, TLC vehicles, they're parked and they're not dropping off or picking up anyone. And so that valuable curb space, right, Jean, is no longer being able to be utilized for pickup and drop-offs of a variety of different passengers. And that's something that we're trying to cure here as well.
Yes, I've had that problem when I was trying to get the bus and people would just routinely park in front of the bagel place, which was in front of the bus stop. And I would literally have to go to the drivers and say, please, the bus is coming. I need to get on it because I can't get on a bus that's parked out in the street. I call it leapfrogging, you know, because I can't get out there into traffic and I can't get off the curb right there at the bus stop. I have to go to the, to the corner where the curb cut is. So yes, that is a problem. But in this effort to change things, people who are innocently picking up and dropping off people are being snagged and caught and fined. And some people don't know how to fight it. You know, you're allowing people who don't speak English to drive and get a license and everything. And then they really don't have the skills or the time to fight their ticket. And it's very, and even then, sometimes the administrative judges still fine them. And that's not right. So there's this play of an intersection of, you know, trying to make things safe and then punishing drivers for doing the right thing.
I take that and I'll definitely take your feedback and try to strike a better balance. And thank you so much, Jean, for your testimony. Before I let you leave though, Jean, Kathy, do you have anything to add?
Yes, so first of all, I just want to reiterate that it is legal to drop off and pick up bus lanes, bus stops, fire lanes, I mean, in front of a fire hydrant, as long as, you know, you can move your car in case of an emergency. Our officers will not issue a ticket if they can see that this is something that you're doing. And then our drivers should also have some records of these trip records that they can present at a hearing. I do hear that, you know, some drivers do have language barriers. We provide free interpretation services to all of our drivers. They can come into our offices, we will tell them what their options are. And they can present that evidence with the help of an interpreter and they can make their case to the administrative.
But to do that, they have to take time off from work and they have to know that that is available and that they're probably getting the first, you know, ticket notice, things like that in English. So not everyone is equipped to fight for themselves effectively.
Before I give it back to Kathy, these 8013A1, 1A and B are already illegal right now. And so these drivers are already getting issued summonses. So let me, I think, be very clear on that. And so there, so many drivers still come in and work with Kathy's office to settle these summonses already. Oftentimes, what, right now, I believe, and Kathy will correct me if I'm wrong, is the summonses are about $100 and then you settle for $50, right? And so I'll throw it back to Kathy to explain that.
I just heard yesterday about a driver who got a ticket for either picking up or dropping off a person with a disability yesterday.
And in those cases, right, Kathy's office will work with that driver to ensure that they're not violating any of the rules, especially when they're picking up or dropping off a passenger. Kathy?
Also, I would like to say that you're supposed to do this quickly. You can't go and wait five or 10 minutes for a passenger in these areas to get in because you are causing a serious public safety concern. So we are thinking about the general public, but especially our disabled passengers when we try to, you know, increase these penalties. As far as taking time off, our hearings are actually by phone. Most of our licensees actually do these hearings while they're driving. So I really do think that it is not, they can come in, they can call us. We have interpreters over the phone. We have notices in different languages. We really do try to make this as easy as possible and accommodate all of our licensees.
So to secure a person in a wheelchair especially, it's, it only takes four or five minutes if you know what you're doing. But a lot of drivers don't know what they're doing or don't have the proper steps and it takes more than that.
And that's why, of course, is so important. That's what we want to target here. We want these drivers to know how to do those things. It is for the safety of the passenger.
Well, we want that too, you know, and we don't, and we don't want it to be, they do it fast and don't secure us at all, which happens a lot.
As long as they're loading or unloading, helping you get in the car, securing you, it is not a violation. They will not be ticketed for that.
Sometimes where they pull up, we can't, a wheelchair user can't get off the curb there. We can't jump curbs. So we have to go to the corner, come back in traffic and then, you know, get to the cargo section of the vehicle. So that can take time and it might look like the driver is not doing anything but stopping. But we're actually actively going to the vehicle.
We'll continue to work with you, look at your written testimony from a variety of different accessibility and disability advocates and go from there. But I really appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Cheryl, I'm going to use the chair's prerogative and recognize Joe Rappaport as our next person to testify.
Thanks so much. I'm Joe Rappaport of the Brooklyn Center for Independence of the Disabled. I'm here to testify, as you heard from Jean, with other colleagues from the disability community about the proposal to drastically increase fines and penalties for drivers to pick up and drop off passengers in bike and bus lanes, et cetera. Our groups also have submitted a letter outlining our views. In spite of the TLC's reassurance about the impact on disabled passengers, this proposal, we believe, needs a great deal more thought and research. And we urge the TLC to hold off on moving forward with it or any other version of this rule until you have fully examined, more fully examined, the concerns of the disability community and engage more fully with drivers, as Beta V, Zubin and Andrew have testified. The TLC also must engage more extensively with the MTA, whose accessory broker drivers also are targeted for increased penalties. Let's look more, let's look more closely at that aspect of your proposal. Accessory ride brokers now carry about 70% of riders, a major shift in the last few years. And a majority of accessory ride users have mobility disabilities, including riders who are blind. They can't use the subways or buses or get to them. While we consider paratransit service part of the mass transit system, it is different in that it requires that the passenger be picked up precisely where they need to leave from, not down the block, around the corner, across the street. In addition, some accessory ride passengers must be escorted to the entrance of the building. To the, must be escorted to the entrance of the building, not just dropped off at the curb. And they must be dropped off at the address they are going to. Again, not someplace vaguely nearby. If I didn't, my name is Joe Rappaport and I'm from the Brooklyn Center for Independence of the Disabled. I just received a message that I need to identify myself. In any case, this kind of thing where people are dropped in the wrong location happens all the time, unfortunately. But in simply meeting accessory rides mandate, drivers now would be even more heavily fined and possibly lose their licenses if they just do their job. That doesn't make sense. No matter what you do, broker drivers should be exempt from these increased fines. Not everyone who has a disability uses accessory ride, of course. And the TLC must take into account those passengers.
Thirty seconds remaining.
It's unreasonable to expect them to go far out of their way, down a long block or across the street to get a taxi, Uber or Lyft ride. We're certain there are ways to reduce the intrusion of TLC regulated vehicles into bike and bus lanes. This proposal isn't it. We look forward to working with you to come up with better approaches while taking into account the rights of disabled people, a protected class. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jahia Zabatar, an advocate for safe streets.
Thank you for the time to testify today. My name is Jahia Zabatar and no affiliation to state. As someone that cares and advocates for street safety, thank you for undertaking these rule changes. And I would like to testify in support of the Vision Zero rule changes. Over the past 10 years, I have reported over 400 serious moving violations by licensed TLC drivers to the TLC. And I appreciate the TLC's professionalism in handling those reports thoroughly and its longstanding commitment to Vision Zero. New York City is the densest city in North America. And following the New York City traffic rules and the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law is not optional and plays a key role in ensuring our streets are safe for all individuals. Clear, however, that when you go outside and you regularly see vehicles blocking crosswalks, driving in bike lanes, running red lights, making illegal U-turns, turning from the center lane, failing to yield to pedestrians, that culturally, there's just a low compliance rate with these critical safety rules. Against that backdrop, I believe this rule change is appropriately structured to reinforce that these rules are not optional and that repeat violations have consequences while simultaneously ensuring there's targeted education. TLC data shows that while the vast majority of drivers get zero or one violations for these rules, for a minority, the existing fine structure is not a deterrent. I would also like to note that the use of escalating violations or escalating fines now applies for all drivers who get camera violations issued by the MTA for parking in a bus stop, parking in a bus lane or double parking. And in the first five months that those cameras were online in 2024, the MTA issued over 500,000 such violations. These rule changes match that approach and I think it's appropriate. I would encourage the TLC to make two modifications to these rules. One, to increase the lookback period for repeat violations from 15 months to 24 months to account for the variable, but sometimes lengthy, delay and adjudication of some violations. And please refer to my written comments for details about possible reclassification of one particular moving violation. And also, I would just like to say, like, in relation to many of the comments today, there's very widespread misunderstanding of which curb regulations allow drop-off and which ones do not. And so I think elevating the education of this is very important. And I thank you for the TLC for including that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adalisa Payaro Diara from UTANY. Adalisa, yes, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, commissioners and everyone attending today. My name is Adalisa Payaro Diara. I'm the president of UTANI. Today, we are here once more to oppose another unfair and abusive rule that only affects our industry as usual. It doesn't matter which sector of the industry you work. This regulation is abusive, unfair, and it only creates hardship to us and our families. How can we provide a safe and effective service if every time we have to pick up or drop a passenger, we might encounter a penalty? We already have such a difficult time doing this job because every agency in the city looks for a way to make money from us. Taxi Lousine Commission should protect drivers and the job we do to move this city 24/7. But instead, we are always giving, we are always giving the hard-earned money to the city without any consideration for us and our family. We urge the commissioner and those involved to review this decision to put a stop to the abuse and constant attack on our drivers. We are citizens trying to earn a decent living for our family and we are a very important part of the economy and the constant movement of this. And we are very important part of the economy and the constant movement of this city. We work twenty-four seven to provide a service. And without regard the weather or any situation, we were at the front line during COVID. Where we have hundreds of drivers that passed away. Doing this job. We are not against rules and regulations, but it has to be fair. We cannot provide the service door to door to, um, in a safe manner if we are gonna be penalized every time we do so. We need to get involved, everybody, when we make a rule affecting the job and the industry. Sit down with everyone involved, organizers, um, advocates for the industry. And those that wanna create this rule. We are not a piggy, uh, we're not a bank account, bank ATM for the city. I'm sorry. Um, the city always looking for the way to make money. How can we be successful in this job and provide for our family?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Our money keep going back to the city. There's no way we could provide the same service. As is requested by TLC, where we need to drive from point A to point B in a safe manner. Please rethink this, um, rules and do what's best for everyone, including the drivers. Please think about the drivers.
I have a question for you. So if the fine structure fines part remains the same. Uh, or what would your thoughts be? If, if we're, we're saying, hey, you know, um. That you're saying, uh, you know, the, the fines are excessive, that we're using you as a breakout, which is not the intention. What about, you know, uh, what about just the class or what about just s- something else i- 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 as a penalty and not? Not the, not the fee as a substitute.
We are, we already, sorry, we already, um, talked about these classes during our renewal training. We talk about Vision Zero, how to make the proper left turn, how to be safe. I always talk about drivers safe. Safe driving, making sure you let the passenger know to look for the cyclist, to look for the pedestrian. You know, make sure you allow the pedestrian to cross the street. We have to be, we have to look for the buses. MTA buses, school buses, other vehicles, that, um, the pedestrian, you know. All the drivers, the cyclists, the, the scooter. And also we have to try to provide a safe service and keep our eyes on the road. When we are dropping or picking up a passenger, we don't decide where that bus stop is, right? Um, let's say for instance, my mom's building has two stops, one in the right side, one in the front. Where can she be picked up? He's an elderly person that uses a cane. She'll take more than five minutes to be picked up by a passenger. By a, a driver. So we have to be able to understand that there are other, um, issues. And, and we don't do it because we want to. We don't want that fifty, a hundred dollar fine. Drivers know that they have to do what is requested because then the passenger will report them. For not picking them up in a safe area. So. Classes, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty dollars, that's too much money for the driver. That's the truth. Drivers right now, we are.
But my thoughts are right, a- and, uh, me, I, I want your opinion on this is. Maybe w- we keep it the same for the first violation, but where I'm trying to target are the drivers, right? The three percent of drivers who completely do this time after time again. Without regard to street safety that I'm most concerned by, right? And so there, there are some drivers who have ten plus points and then we, you know, like, and that's, that's insane to me. Um, a- and so, a- and they, they, they do this because there are so, so many ways to get out of this and so. You know, maybe i- i- the first time for these types of violations would be the same, maybe even the second time. And then after that, if you get a third, fourth, fifth violation of the same thing, that's where I have more concerns by. So, so what are your thoughts on that? Like if we, for the first violation, let's say, you know, keep it the same. Uh, a- and I'm not, uh, and I'm not committing to this, I'm just, uh, asking.
I know, I understand, but, um, yes, um, I understand that there's still a few drivers that creating this issue, but. Um, we also have to look at the bigger picture. We have buses lane and, and bicycle lanes on areas like infernal hospitals. If you go into the Bronx area, you're gonna find a lot of bus lanes in front of hospitals. How can they pick up? Those passengers, especially the disabled and elderly people, and they need more time, right? So, yes, after a certain amount of points, we don't disagree. After a certain amount of points, a driver should be. Issue some kind of penalty or a class to re- reinforce the, um, rules and regulations of the city, but. Making it for everyone. First violation going into points that is unfair, you know, then it should be looked into. What are the best way for everyone and be able to, um, pull out those bad, you know. Um, violators, constant violators and re- teach them, right? We educate them about, you know, you doing this the wrong way. Um, let's, let's work on that and, and move forward. So I think that there is a way to work. Not just go ahead and implementing this rule for everyone and then just for a few drivers.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Iman Romawi Doster from the Disability Justice Program.
Hi, good morning. Um, my name is Iman Romawi Doster and I'm Senior Community Organizer with the Disability Justice Program. At New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. Yesterday, Milby. And eleven other disability advocacy groups submitted a letter to your office urging you to delay the implementation. Of these increased penalties to TLC regulated vehicles for parking in crosswalks, bus stops, areas. And buses and bike lanes until TLC engages with discussion with the disability community about the potential negative impacts. Of the cha- of these changes on people with disabilities. We would like to discuss potential solutions which are less likely to negatively impact passengers with disabilities. As a double amputee who uses a roller later walker, it's vitally important for me to be able to be dropped off at a location that is both convenient and safe. Milby supports regulations that keep crosswalks, bus lanes, bus stop areas and bicycle lanes free of obstruction and in turn. Make traveling in New York City easier and safer for people with disabilities. However, Milby does not support the proposed rule change in this current format. As detailed in the letter that our group sent to you yesterday, we recommend a designated discharge and pickup area. With a pedestrian ramp on every block that can only be used to pick up and drop off passengers with disabilities. Although notably, this would not only be, uh, solve the problem for blind and visually impaired riders as well. But other folks with mobility disabilities and we would thus like to discuss this issue with you. Additionally, we'd like to discuss a way to distinguish the broker service cars. Used as part of the MTA's accessory ride service to ensure their drivers do not receive a penalty. When picking up or dropping off passengers with disabilities. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric McClure from Streets PAC.
Thank you. Uh, good morning Commissioners. Uh, my name is Eric McClure. I am the Executive Director of Streets PAC. We are a public act, uh, political action committee. And advocacy organization. So Streets PAC strongly supports the Taxi Limousine Commission's proposed changes to Rule eighty thirteen. Which would increase penalties for stationary and non-hazardous moving violations committed by four hire drivers. Violations such as parking in crosswalks, double parking, parking in no standing zones or next to fire hydrants and driving or parking in bike lanes may seem like no big deal to some drivers. But they can be dangerous or even deadly to someone on foot or on a bicycle or trapped in a burning building. For example, Madison Lyden, a young Australian tourist was struck and killed by the driver of a garbage truck in Central Park West in twenty eighteen. After she had to navigate around a taxicab whose driver had stopped in the bike lane. Countless doorings incidents have been precipitated by double parked vehicles and cars stopped or parked in crosswalks create dangerous blind spots where pedestrians assume they are safe. Establishing graduated fines and assigning points for these violations will send a strong message to taxi and other four hire drivers that those potentially dangerous actions are not okay. And they will only truly impact a relatively small group of repeat offenders. The vast majority of taxi and livery drivers have re- have never received summonses for these violations. But TLC data shows that the agency adjudicated about twenty-eight thousand of these violations over a fifteen month period ending in twenty twenty-three. Of which two thousand were issued to repeat offenders and the Vision Zero complaints were increased by more than a third from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Of course, even one such incident proved, can prove dangerous or even deadly, which is more than enough justi- justification to assign a license point for the first violation. Drivers would be able to take a remedial TLC approved safety course to avoid license suspension and a smart use of education to modify behavior. And New Yorkers have the right to expect that the city's professional drivers be held to a high standard. We know most of these drivers operate safely and responsibly and they won't be affected by any changes to the rules. We also do support creating more relief stations for drivers underscoring the need for many more public restroom facilities across the city. As well as ensuring that accommodations are made for the picking up and dropping off of disabled persons. We also strongly support amended rule sixty-eight fourteen, which would allow consideration of certain criminal offenses committed in other jurisdictions in assessing a driver's fitness for a TLC license. It's highly likely that someone who drives on safely in another city or town will do the same in New York City. Giving the Taxi Limousine Commission the power to consider all of a driver's convictions regardless of where they were incurred is a common sense step that will keep New Yorkers safer. We're grateful that TLC takes Vision Zero and safety as seriously as it does and we urge the adoption of the proposed amended rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anwar Malik from IDG. Mr. Malik.
Yep, allow me a second.
Excuse me, you're on.
Come here. All right, good morning Commissioners. Uh, my name is Anwar Malik. I've been a TLC licensed driver for over nine years now. I'm also an advocate for drivers on the IDG platform. Today, sadly, I'm here to say that these proposed rules are completely unfair and should be thrown in. Let's be honest, this hearing proves that TLC does not care about drivers. TLC only cares about the money coming in. IDG has been telling you for years, since before COVID, that we need designated pickup and drop off zones. TLC ignored us, but now that you see an opportunity to take money from our pockets, suddenly you wanna hear it. That's very shameful. We, the TLC drivers, do not choose where to stop. The apps send us to a location. And we cannot know if it's a bike lane or a bus lane until we arrive. What are we supposed to do? Cancel the ride and risk deactivation and have riders assume that we are discriminating against them? Make passengers walk blocks away to get hit and get hit with a bad rating and or complaints? You are putting us in a, in an impossible position. And let's talk about reality. Passengers don't always want to meet us somewhere else. What happens when we have luggage, when they have luggage? What about disabled passengers who need extra help? Commissioner Doe, I'm talking to you now. You've picked up passengers before. You know exactly what it's like out there. How many of your pickups were in fire hydrant zones? How many people needed help with their bags or wheelchairs? You know how much space and caution that takes, yet here we are talking about punishing drivers instead of fixing the real problem. Why are TLC plated vehicles being lumped in with regular cars? In this, if the city wants to crack down on bike lane and bus lane violations, fine, do it for personal vehicles. But not TLC drivers. They shouldn't be exempt unless of course they're parked. I get what you're saying. We don't park in these spots for fun. We stop there because the system forces us to. These fines are outrageous, two hundred dollars per ticket, get a mandatory hundred dollar class every time. That's a whole day or two of work to pay off a fine. Meanwhile, the companies controlling where we stop face no consequences.
Thirty seconds remaining.
If you cared, you wouldn't be pun- punishing drivers. You'd be forcing Uber and Lyft to create legal designated pickup and drop off areas. Like they have in other cities. I urge you, throw these rules in the garbage and let's restart. Or if you're serious about safety, go after the app companies and make them part of the solution. But don't sit up there and pretend this is about safety when we all know it's just another way to take money from hardworking drivers. We deserve a lot better, but I do wanna.
Mine has expired.
I wanna compliment the commissioner on something if that's allowed.
Compliments always.
Perfect. So he did say we have due process. I love how he said that because at IDG, that's how we started. That's why we started. It was for due processes, right? Now, but I, what I, what I wanna add to that is, i- instead of having the drivers go into a hearing where they don't know. They don't know how, uh, how to talk. Sometimes they get scared or something. I think it's better with TLC creates a dispute app where the, the drivers can dispute tickets. They can come to our union office. And we dispute those tickets. We help them. We help them, right? We provide the proof. You get what I'm saying?
Yes. All right, thank you. Our next speaker up is Jackie Lynn from IDG.
I think it's.
Oh, come on, man.
Hey, everybody. Uh, my name is Jackie. I'm with IDG. Um, you know. I, I've been a driver there as well, but the thing is, it's like a lot of things that we have to face on the road. It's not fair for us. There's a lot of things that we have to look out for and now, you know, with the fact that, uh, we barely have time to use the bathroom to stop tight somewhere to, to take a break. We go pick up a passenger, we get ticketed, that, that, that cuts into our earnings. That's one whole day lost. And, and you know, after expenses and everything, we, we make nothing on the road already. Um. We, what we need is, if, if you see these repeated offenses, what we need is, we need parking spaces. That's available for drivers for temporary pickup and lo- drop offs, right? We need parking pla- places to, to pick up and load, load off passengers. We need a place that's safe to, uh, wait for passengers without getting ticketed. We are not the ones that decide where to go pick up. We are the ones that's being told, hey, you have to be here specifically in order to pick up at that specific place. So this whole ticketing about double parking, about parking in, in no standing zones, uh. We don't have a safe place and we get penalized for that? And then what we do, we, we, we decline those trips. And next you know, they say, oh, destination, destination discrimination. They say, oh, you're, you're, you're discriminating against a federally protected trade. That's what the riders were used to complain as and that would kick us off the app permanently. So, you know, all this stuff, it hurts us all the time and this is not just from today. We've been saying this from before the pre- pre-pandemic times of saying, hey, we need designated pickup and drop off. And also, you, you're saying the repeated offense offenders, why are they having, are, why are they being repeated offenders? Because they don't have a place to park. They don't have a place to quickly go in there a- a- and leave. What if we have a ten minute parking space, uh, in those daylighted areas or maybe one more block from the daylighted area, like one more parking space from the daylighted area? That would help us a lot of people not get these kind of tickets. Um. The other thing I wanna talk about is for this class that, that you guys are proposing, it's the Vision Zero and, 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 uh, wheelchair accessibility. Those are two different completely matter, uh, two, two different complete matters. Why does someone that drives a Toyota Camry or SUV, uh, get a Vision Zero violation ticket? Why do they have to also learn about the, uh, wheelchair portion, you know? I get it if they are wheelchair driver, a wheelchair, uh, accessible.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Getting these kind of tickets, fine. They only do the wheelchair portion. If they're only there for moving violation portion, then only take the class for the moving violation portion. These two matters should be separated. It shouldn't be as all in one class. You know, a driver, as you all know, they take the renewal class and already has the wheelchair portion in their, uh, uh, training, uh, security and training already in it. That should be, that should be enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. After Sona, after Sona, we'll take a five minute break. Go ahead, Sona.
Hi, uh. It's me second or you? Hello. Oh, can you guys, oh, it's Lavi or Sunam? I don't get it.
Sona first and then we'll take a five minute break. Go ahead, Sona.
Okay, it, it said, uh, Sunam. Uh, good morning, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner, uh, and, uh, Commissioner Doe and all the Commissioners. And, um, with due respect, I wanna, uh, highlight, uh. The, uh, we see here today a lot of agencies talking about the Vision Zero. Uh, we never said we'd never support Vision Zero. Indeed. Uh, we support Vision Zero and whatever the renewal classes, give education about the Vision Zero is awesome. But how the, uh, agencies portray, especially, uh, I wanna, uh, refer to the FDNY representative. Uh, she demonstrated so nicely that, uh, the car, wh- which was parked, uh, you know. She demonstrated like it was a TLC vehicle. I just wanna correct all the people, all the audiences, all the public that. That was not a TLC vehicle. It was a private vehicle that, that lead, uh, you know, the, uh. Issue with the, uh, uh, fire hydrant, uh, that's, that's. Just want to correct that. And we TLC drivers are professional driver. We do not buy our license in Jacksonites or we do not buy the license in Manhattan or Chinatown. We, we, we went through class, we know the rules, we, we know the regulations and we respect the laws. But all the agencies here coming with all the testimony, what we learned or what I feel is like they are going after the TLC driver is not acceptable. And it's something that it should not be something that, you know, blaming to the TLC drivers. As you know, we just celebrate the pay raise and it's in the process still. We are, we are also looking for ways to save money. They're saying that not spending is also a form of savings. Currently, the MTA is taking our money through unfair bus fines, double parking, which diminishes the joy of a pay raise. It's not just the MTA, a traffic agent contribute the issues too. Not letting drop off in the hotspot area in Manhattan, especially in Penn Station and Tamskav area. They don't issue tickets $115. In addition, it costs $115 just to use a bathroom too, because there's nowhere to park. The city is filled with commercial vehicles, making even harder for us. And on top of it, now TLC wants to find $200 for stopping on bike and bus lanes. These rules ruin the livelihood of drivers. Vicheer passengers often order on the, on the one-way and you know how the streets are NYC. Very narrow like a room size or a toilet size. Where we wait our passenger, either both are, both right or left, both are occupied by either bus lane or bike lanes. Where we wait.
Thirty seconds remaining.
This is the question to TLC chairs and DOT as well. Instead of TLC working hard for the drivers, TLC is creating more chaos for drivers. We cannot take this anymore. There are already many law enforcement agencies to ticket a wrongdoing of drivers and we support that. And we strongly condemn this proposed and it has to come with a better solution. And the better solution is to stand with advocating organizations like Independent Driver and driver like us to make a proper change. Thank you so much, everyone, for giving this opportunity.
Thank you. We'll now call for a five-minute recess and then we'll start again at 11:40. Thank you.